I need to take a field trip to see that fig tree that started like this.
Let me do it again, I didn't have my mic on. Okay. Well, I'd like to welcome you to our regularly scheduled city council meeting for the city of Malden on Monday, December eighteenth, twenty twenty-three at seven P. M. As the records reflect, all members of council are present along with our city administrator, our city clerk, and our various department heads, and our legal counsel, Mr. John Dugan, and Daniel Hughes, with him to be sure John does it correctly. So we should be good tonight. Uh, so welcome you guys for coming out tonight, uh, for attending this meeting. And for those that may be attending via Zoom, thank you for attending and staying abreast of the, uh, city of Malden. With that, our next item will be our invocation, our pledge of allegiance, and I believe Chairwoman, uh, Councilwoman Kuzner has the pleasure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let us pray, please. Heavenly Father, thank you so much for this Christmas season and for sending your son for us. Lord, I pray that we take this time to just be kind to others and, um, help those who are less fortunate. Lord, I also pray for this council and for your wisdom in the decisions that we need to make tonight. In Jesus' name I pray, amen. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Ms. Kuzner. Uh, give me a second, I'm gonna come down front for a couple of items. There. One of the greatest privileges I have is to read and sign various proclamations on behalf of the city of Malden. So I would ask if Councilwoman Kuzner would join me down front? As Diane Kuzner started serving the city of Malden in January twenty twenty as a city councilwoman, and whereas Councilwoman Kuzner moved to Malden from Irving, Texas, nineteen ninety-four, and has called Malden home ever since. Whereas Councilwoman Kuzner has been a tremendous asset on council, ebbing to lead the city in times of fantastic economic development growth, and her role as chairwoman of the Building Codes Committee. Whereas Councilwoman Kuzner will now have extra time to spend with her husband Randy, who previously served on council, her two sons, and her grandchildren. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I, Terry Merritt, mayor of the city of Malden, along with all the residents of our city, and my fellow city council members, who hereby proclaim that we are proud of Councilwoman Kuzner's public service with the city of Malden. We wish her well, December, dated this eighteenth day of December twenty twenty.
I just want to say it's been my privilege and my honor to serve the city of Malden. And they need to find a new tree hugger.
Whereas John Dugan was appointed city attorney for the city of Malden in two thousand and four. And whereas John Dugan has become a steadfast pillar of legal wisdom, committed to serving the city of Malden and its residents, city council, and city staff for nearly twenty years. And whereas John Dugan has practiced law for over fifty years and has spent forty-three years representing municipalities in the upstate of South Carolina. And whereas John Dugan's commitment to public service has played an integral role in the growth, prosperity, and well-being of the city. And whereas throughout his career, John Dugan consistently demonstrated his legal ability by navigating complex legal matters, offering sound legal advice, and promoting fairness, justice, and adherence to the rule of law. And whereas John Dugan is affectionately known for offering legal guidance through his many, 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 I added the last two many, stories, even if the audience was, has heard them before, and referring to a complex legal matter as a sticky wicket. And whereas not only has John Dugan been a great lawyer for the city of Malden, but he has also been a friend to the city of Malden's elected officials and city staff. And whereas the city council and city staff wish to extend their heartfelt gratitude to John Dugan for his years of dedicated service, and whereas John Dugan is taking a well-earned retirement. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I, Terry Merritt, mayor of the city of Malden, along with all the residents of our city and my fellow council members, who hereby proclaim that we wish John Dugan a wonderful retirement and thank him for his dedicated service to the city of Malden, dated this eighteenth day of December twenty twenty-three.
Mr. Mayor, um, I just want to take a minute to say this. I received this with mixed feeling because this is the first time I've seen the whole council here in a long time. And I noticed there wasn't any actual substantive work that you all were going photo. And I figured out that you all are all here because you're just so doggone glad I'm leaving. You wanted to be here to make sure that I wasn't going to retire. And the other thing is because there isn't any substantive work, then I don't get to bill for being here tonight. So anyway, but that's probably Dale's plan. So much, so much trouble when you were chair of the finance committee. But it's been a pleasure and a privilege to work with all of you. And this city is so well-run. And this city, the people of this city need to know how, what your government's like. Outstanding leadership that I've got to work with. And I see out here many of the department heads that I've worked with who do a terrific job. So I thank all of you for the privilege of working with me. And I'm not going away that much. I'll see you.
Just remember she who must be obeyed. Next item on our agenda is the reading and approval of minutes, the city council meeting of November the twentieth, twenty twenty-three. As the records reflect, I was not present at that meeting, so even though Robert Shrewd Lord allows me to vote, I will not vote on this tonight. So what is council's pleasure on the minutes of the city council meeting, November the twentieth, twenty twenty-three, as submitted in your packet?
Move that be approved or submitted?
Motion, Mr. Matt, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Craylon. Any discussion, corrections, adjustments necessary? Here none, all those in favor of the minutes as submitted for November twenty twenty-three, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Next item, I believe, is minutes for a special call council meeting of December the fourth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, council, you've got it in your packet, is there a motion to accept?
Motion to approve as submitted.
Motion, Miss King, is there a second?
Second.
For Reynolds. Any discussion, correction, comments, additions, deletions? Here none, all those in favor of the minutes as submitted for special call council meeting December fourth, twenty twenty-three, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, here in the minutes are approved as submitted. Uh, anyone for public comment? None? Line is none, also.
No, sir.
Right? Next item we have is our report from our city administrator, Mr. Dugan. Duncan. You are due.
John got a promotion, he's gotta stick around for a while.
We take more of you than that. Go ahead.
That's right. Uh, thank you, Mayor Council. Uh, have a few items for, for updates tonight. First, I wanted to, uh, to talk a little bit about the railroad crossing at Jenkins Streets. We recently met with representatives from the railroad to discuss the upcoming relocation of the crossing at City Center Village. S T X has been awarded the bid to install the new crossing plate at Jenkins Street and Murray. S T X estimates that it will begin mobilization in January, and the work should be completed in about three to four weeks after starting. Once the crossing plate has been installed, approaches will be installed as well on both sides. Railroad representatives believe that signalization will occur sometime in the summer of twenty twenty-four, and we anticipate the new crossing to be fully open by fall twenty twenty-four. That's about to kick off. Next, uh, staff participated in the Red Kettle Program last week by the Salvation Army. We were sponsoring a kettle last Thursday out in front of Ingalls, and staff from every department greeted guests, uh, with a season's greeting and a chime of a bell. I want to thank city department heads and staff for participating in this event, in which we helped raise over four hundred and eighty-five dollars just from those few hours we were out there. Job well done there. For more than a hundred years, the Salvation Army has served people in need across Greenville, Pitts County counties. Salvation Army provides a host of services, including shelter for those in need of a safe place to rest, food for those experiencing hunger, rent, utilities assistance, disaster relief, and more. So we are very proud to partner with them on that. Next up, just a reminder, city offices will be closed next Monday and Tuesday for Christmas holidays. This will impact sanitation collection next week, next week, as crews will not be collecting sanitation on our usual schedule. Those with Monday routes will be picked up on Wednesday, and Tuesday's routes will be picked up on Thursday of next week. And last and, uh, but certainly not least, uh, we'll have a swearing-in ceremony before we kick off, uh, things, or just as we kick off things in twenty twenty-four. City will see a swearing-in of new and returning council members on Tuesday, January second, at five thirty P. M. Taking the oath of office will be Mayor Terry Merritt, council members Carol King, Michael Reynolds, and council member-elect Mark Steenback. Reception with light refreshments will be available starting at five P. M. After the swearing-in, council will hold a special call meeting to elect a mayor per term, set committee assignments, and reappoint the city attorney and municipal clerk. We hope the public will join us. That's my report, sir.
Thank you, sir. Questions from the city administrator? One question, the amount that were collected, was that just the big kettle that included?
Yes, sir, that, that was just the big kettle. They haven't counted the small kettle yet.
Gotcha.
Okay, so we, we expect that total to go up, and appreciate everyone, uh, supporting that initiative.
Thank you very much. Uh, reports from our standing committees, uh, first up, Finance and Policy Chairman Reynolds.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually have nothing to report, but I did want to just take this opportunity really quickly to tell Ms. Kuzner it's been an absolute pleasure to serve with you, and your perspective is very different than mine, but very helpful as I weigh through and weigh through decisions that we were dealing with. So certainly it was always a pleasure, and, and just want to take the chance to thank you for that and, um, your service, uh, and then also thank Mr. Dugan as well. I've known you a long time, actually, surprisingly, um, but have always appreciated your insight. And I understand you'll be down in Columbia teaching a specific class on how to tell an irrelevant story that is completely billable. But I understand, I think you'll, you'll have much success in your future endeavors, but I have appreciated serving this. Thank you, Mr. I think I went deaf there, went blind. Um, that's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Public Safety, uh, Chairwoman King.
Um, nothing to report at this time, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Public Works, uh, Chairman Craylon.
To report this time, thank you.
Economic Plan and Development Chairman Mattney.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm actually going to use this time to, to do what, uh, Michael did as well. Diane, I just want to say that it has been an absolute pleasure serving with you these past several years. We are extremely appreciative of, of your service and your dedication, and, um, we look forward to you being able to enjoy the next chapter of your life. Um, John, I have, uh, been able to work with you for, for ten years now, and as I listen to the mayor, uh, discuss that you've been practicing law for the past forty-three years, I was just curious, when are you gonna get it right? Now, I, genuinely, I, I appreciate, um, your, your legal insight. Um, I appreciate your advice to this council, and I appreciate your friendship, and wish you nothing but the best and a, a well-deserved and well-earned retirement.
Mr. Mayor, I didn't know this was going to be a roast.
I wrote down roast, so I, I'm good. Thank you, Mr. Mattney. Uh, Building Codes, uh, Chairman, Chairwoman Kuzner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mattney and Mr. Reynolds, I appreciate that. Um, I don't have anything to report, but I would like to just say that I have so enjoyed being the chair of BDS and getting to know Mr. Dearhog and his visions for the city. Um, just, y'all are in good hands, that's, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Kuzner. Let the record reflect, actually, uh, David had hair when Diane took over.
Not true. If he did, it was really short.
From my point, I, I'd love only call Ms. Kuzner my free hugger because her perspectives have been differed and has caused thought processes that we might have overlooked in our rush to build a downtown and, uh, put it together. And I know it doesn't appear like there's been a rush, but, uh, we're getting there. She did bring a, a different perspective, and, uh, I certainly appreciate that. And, uh, never was, uh, just set, she was willing to listen. Thank you for your service. Recreation, uh, Chairman Ogden.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have anything to report other than thank you, John, and Ms. Kuzner. I'll do the best that I can to be the tree hugger.
Don't you be daffy. Okay. Next item before is unfinished business, there is none. Uh, standing committee items, none. New business ordinance first reading, none. Uh, next item, standing committee items, uh, Ms., uh, Miller.
Council is asked to consider the mid-year purchase of Axon tasers and body cameras for the Malden Police Department.
This is coming from Public Safety of Chairwoman King.
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I hope everyone's had the opportunity to read, um, the information in the packet about this purchase. Um, we had a lengthy discussion a couple of weeks ago, um, during committees. Um, I would say that this is an important item to our, um, legal counselor, uh, um, sitting by the mayor. Very excited about this, um, and hope that council feels the same. So for the sake of discussion, if we have any, I'm going to go ahead and make the motion to, um, proceed with the purchase of the Axon Office Safety Package as presented in your packet with a total five-year cost of one point one eight one five fifty five forty-four point six four, with a mid-year purchase in February totaling sixty-five thousand nine sixty-nine ninety-three.
Thank you, Ms. King, I have a motion, is there a second? Second for Mr. Craylon. Discussions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just real quick, because this does have a large price tag, I wanted, um, to go on record and just mention a few items that this program, um, includes. It basically, it replaces all of our body worn cameras for our police department, it replaces all of our tasers, um, and it's, the tasers are, I mean, you can't even compare what we have now compared to the tasers that are included in this, um, contract. There'll be three virtual reality, um, headsets for, um, simulators. Um, so our officers can train anywhere in this building or off-site. Um, to me, this is an investment for the city, it's a tool to help recruit because it's the best thing that's out there today. And then finally, um, the, well, the cameras will be replaced every two and a half years, so we will get, if there's a new camera that comes out in two years, that's what we will get as a replacement in two and a half years. And there is a halt suit, I forgot about that, for training purposes. So, um, it, the, the demonstration that was received from this company was just incredible. Um, I'm just so excited for the police department. Thank you to the city administrator for finding a way for us to, to go ahead and make this purchase and get this equipment on site, um, with council's approval tonight at the beginning of the year rather than having to wait another year. So that's all I have, if y'all have any questions, I'm sure Mr. Duncan can address those.
Ms. King, any other questions? Mr. Reynolds.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just real quickly, Ms. King, and we've talked before, and then I've mentioned before, mid-year purchases are something that always give me consternation. Could you speak to the reason, uh, that it makes sense to do this now as opposed to waiting till next budget cycle?
Of course, you know, you and I have that same heartburn. So the reason it was presented to us, like everything else in our society today, the cost of this equipment increases, um, in January. So to avoid a, um, larger price tag, Mr. Duncan found a way to, um, to budget for it mid-year as well as some savings that the police department had with funds that were, that are not going to be used and have not been used this fiscal year, um, which totals a little over fifty thousand dollars, um, that we're able to make this mid-year purchase.
Uh, thank you, Ms. King, that's one where I set that there on T for you, so I was hoping you'd take a big swing at it. I appreciate that because that, you know.
Up for the challenge.
Um, that was as you looked through something like this, you check all the boxes and said this makes, this makes too much sense, and so where's the, where's the catch? And, you know, for me, as we're constantly trying to invest in our police, this is another investment that I think is, uh, wise and long-term, and, and certainly something that, uh, to your point, I appreciate how Mr. Duncan, as well as a police chief, tried to find a way to continue to provide the best, um, equipment for our officers. So, thank you, Ms. King, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Reynolds, anyone else? It's my understanding that the, I agree with my two companions up here, that mid-year is not something we're used to doing. Uh, the payment that it would be due in February, as I understand it, will be coming from under unutilized ARPA funds that currently have, though it's not coming out of the true operational, uh, portion of our budget. Yes and no? What we'll look at in the, the other four years, five years will be in the annual appropriations. And we can look forward to seeing that budget in the springtime, that we'll have our chances there. So thank you, uh, for being extremely proactive in this, all of you that have been involved. Uh, our police are under so much pressure today. These gives us some additional tools that, uh, can, uh, just rather provide information and proof that they did it the right way. Certainly appreciate that. Anything else? Here none, all those in favor of the motion to proceed with the purchase of the Axon, uh, systems as stated earlier by Ms. King, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign? Here none, the motion carries unanimously. Next item, Ms. Miller.
Council is requested to accept the city of Malden Miller Road Sidewalks Project Participation Agreement, project six nineteen, with the Greenville Legislative Delegation Transportation.
Thank you. I believe this has come out, Public Works, Mr. Craylon?
Yes, uh, it's time I'd like to make a motion that the, uh, city of Malden enter into agreement, um, with the, uh, Greenville Legislative Delegation Transportation Committee, uh, for the sidewalk project, uh, on Miller Road.
Yeah, for motion, Mr. Craylon, is there a second?
Second.
That was a unanimous second. So we appreciate that. Ms. King and Mr. Mattney, um, discussion, I'll take it right quick for just a second. Uh, the senior people sitting up here, Mr. Mattney, Ms. King, and myself, came on board as council people. We all said the same thing, sidewalks on Miller Road, sidewalks from Old Mill to Corn Road for our kids. And we've been up here now for nine years. And through Seth's due diligence and as well as some others, we got it. We got the money and we're proceeding with it. So kudos to all that have been involved and have been saying this is our first step, first step in sidewalks in a critical area that has been, I know, talked about in this city for fourteen years at least. So thank you to this council for being proactive and, uh, Mr. Duncan for finding, uh, resources to, as I quote the old southern philosopher, "get her done." So we're there. So thank you. Any other discussion? Mr. Mattney.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to take a minute as, as, you know, we prepare to accept the money on this project, this is, because we've got a million dollars coming from, uh, state appropriation. I want to thank, uh, Senator Ross Turner, Representative Bruce Bannister, and Representative David Vaughn, who, uh, all were instrumental in helping the city get these funds appropriated in the state budget.
Thank you, Mr. Mattney. Anyone else? Here none, all those in favor of the motion to enter into the agreement and accept the funds for the sidewalk project participation, project number six nineteen with the GLDTC, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign? Here none, the motion carries unanimously. Next item coming before us would be coming before us as the committee of the hold, uh, I would entertain a motion to consider the next item would be of the informal method as committee of the hold.
So moved.
Have a motion, Mr. Matt, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. King. Ms. King. Discussion. Here none. All those in favor of entering informal method of committee holds, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Here none. We will consider ourselves to consider the next item as be of the informal method. City Administrator's contract extension, would the Finance Committee Chair like to analyze them?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I've got that. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the employee agreement with the city administrator for the contract extension as provided for you in your packet.
So I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. King, any discussion?
Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just real quickly, no major changes here. The biggest thing we were trying to adjust when talking about this is going to be the term, the length of the contract. We're adding a full year, which is standard practice from city administrators within the state. And then we'll, as well, make a salary adjustment to bring Mr. Duncan's salary closer to the value that we see him as fit for our city.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Any other discussion? Mr. Matney.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to take a quick minute with Mr. Duncan here to my left to simply say thank you for the past year. You, you jumped in and you had to drink from a fire hose. There was a lot going on and there's still a lot going on. And you had absolutely no fear to tackle the issues that the city has in front of us. We have a lot of great things in front of us and you have just done it as well as anybody possibly could. And I thank you for your dedication to the city so far this year and look forward to continued relationship and your continued leadership.
Anyone else? Here none. All those in favor of the motion to approve the you administrators' contract adjusting the term next three years and the dollar value, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Here none, the motion carries unanimous. And we are back to our second public comment. No one signed up in chambers. No one's waving their hand to you zoom. Right. Next item, I would ask the council to consider an executive session for economic development matter. This is economic development. I would defer to Mr. Matney. Would you like to?
Thank you, Mayor. Move that we enter executive session to consider an economic development matter regarding the proposed sale or purchase of property under Code Section 30-4-78-2.
Any other motions, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. King. Any discussion? Here none. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Here none. We will consider ourselves heading upstairs for executive session. Those opposed, like sign. Here none, we will consider ourselves heading upstairs for executive session at approximately.
Not a concern, but before we conclude our business for 2023, I would like to offer a quote from Run DMC. So open your eyes, lend us an ear. We want to say Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Second that.
I'm glad to see I'm not the only one that follows the philosophers in the Southern here. That we're all good. Just a quick note from me. Ms. Kuzner, I've enjoyed the four years. Your perspectives and our banter back and forth. You've moved us forward. We appreciate that very much. And the best of you and Randy and your family in West Wind or Wild Winds of Texas.
Weatherford.
Weatherford of Texas. I had the.
They're close.
I knew that. Weatherford, Texas, is east of Fort Worth. I looked it up. Huh? West, west. I get that. It's like Mr. Dugan over there. I looked at Duncan and I still got it wrong. Best luck to both of you. Stay in touch. We'll, some of us will still be here till the good Lord takes our ashes. Anything else? Council's, anyone on adjournment?
So many.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Back from Mr. Crayling, all those favor of adjournments, say aye.
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 Be stand adjourned at eight oh one.